Ms. Kubel, please take your seat. We are beginning the working session. Please take your seat. Ms. Kubel. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead. All right. Good evening and welcome to the Abington Township Board of Commissioners working session for August 10th, 2023. We don't do a roll call for this. And so I wanted—tonight's meeting involves three different agenda items. The first is going to be a presentation about the preliminary major subdivision and land development plan for Penn State Abington. We will take public comment on that agenda item following the presentation. And then subsequent to that, there are two hearings that will take place regarding liquor license transfers, and we are required to take public comment about those during the hearings themselves. So that's how the rest of the evening will progress. So the first order of business is a motion to approve the minutes from the working session of July 13th, 2023.
Laura Layman with an objection on the sunshine—
No.
On the sunshine law—
There is no objection. We didn't even get to the speaking—
Seven ten C one doesn't allow you an—
Ms. Layman, you're—
It doesn't allow you an option to not accept an objection to speaking rights.
And it does.
Yes, it does, actually. And this objection is actually a disruption—
Quote me, please, the section.
Yes, it does. The case is called Galena versus Leon. It's a United States Court of Appeals for the Third Circuit, and it says the board does not have to permit members of the public from constantly interrupting the meeting.
I'm not constantly interrupting. I am only inter—
You're interrupting, and the board has the option to tell you to sit down or to have you removed from the meeting.
There is nobody that would define that as constantly interrupting. This is the first time. Thank you.
The first time tonight.
That—it's the first time tonight, and I've only ever interrupted when our speaking rights are challenged. And so you are required to hear them. This does not fit—
I'm actually not, and so—
This does not fit in that case law. I have not constantly—
Ms. Layman, I'm gonna ask you to take your seat.
She should be told to return to her seat—
Yeah, please—
Or should be removed.
Please return to your seat.
This is a violation of sunshine law, and you're on this—
It is not.
Oh, it is?
It is.
So please return to your seat.
It is, in fact.
Okay. So, a motion to approve the minutes from the working session of July 13th, 2023.
It's moved.
Do I have a second?
One second.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. The motion carries. The minutes are approved. Our first item of new business is—will be a presentation of the preliminary major subdivision and land development for LD-22-05, Penn State University, Abington, new academic building. And I will invite the representatives from Penn State to come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Mark Jonas. I represent Penn State. Nice to be back here tonight. This is an application that has been around for some time. There's—no one's gonna suggest this. It was filed last week, and we're asking for this to move on. It was filed in June of 2022. Since that time, we've been meeting with the township staff and the design professionals to address all of the outstanding issues. We think we have done that. There was a later comment from the traffic engineer about adding some sidewalk, and you'll hear that from our brief presentation tonight. We have been before the planning commission several times last month. They recommended unanimously for both preliminary and final. I know this is on the agenda tonight for preliminary. The township engineer is also supportive of preliminary and final. I just want to emphasize, this has been a long deliberative process for Penn State. It goes back to before 2015. I was looking at my notes of meetings and discussions, informal, of course, with the previous ward commissioner, addressing various matters. We've had meetings with neighbors, which the chancellor will discuss. And then, six years later—six years later, we asked the Board of Commissioners to pass two zoning ordinance amendments that would allow the first new academic building since the '70s. So this is a university. This is good for the university and good for the township, and we're certainly hoping that we will be able to move forward. We have what we think can be a compact presentation tonight, subject to your questions. It's always fun to know where to look with 15 commissioners left and right. First, the chancellor will discuss and give you just a summary and overview of the process and the timeline, and then we will turn this over to our design professionals to talk about the plan and to go through the list of the waivers.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jonas.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for having us here and considering the land development application for the new academic building at the Penn State Abington campus. And as Mark said, this is the first new academic space that will be built on our campus since 1973, and this is the latest step in a process that has begun—really began about eight years ago. And just to remind us, because it has been a lengthy process, and we've had a lot of time between the last time I was here and tonight, I'm gonna provide a brief overview of the project and its history, and then turn the presentation over to the design team. So, we undertook a campus master planning exercise in 2014, the Penn State Abington campus, and a new learning space was at the forefront of the recommendations for the campus. In 2015, the university conducted a feasibility study and an analysis of facilities across the university, and that showed that the Penn State Abington campus's square footage per student was almost 50% less than the average at all of our other locations, and it really underscored the need for modern and adequate facilities for our existing students. In order to move forward with the new building, we needed zoning amendments to create a new university-college land use zone or district, and that was a process that required a great deal of community and township engagement. Since the feasibility was—a study was completed in 2015, 2016, and starting in 2015, as Mark indicated, there have been formal and informal discussions with the township and a number of meetings with the neighbors where we shared the project, listened to community feedback, and revised our plans accordingly. And just, you know, six years after the beginning of those discussions, the official township zoning process began in June of 2021, and this has included our appearance several times in this room, before the committee of the whole, twice before the planning commission, of course, before the Board of Commissioners, which resulted in unanimous approval of the zoning amendments needed to move forward in November 2021. Three months ago, the university, Penn State, and the Board of Trustees affirmed their support of the new academic building moving forward with the inclusion of the construction of this project on the university capital plan, and we've been moving ahead with the land development process. Our design team has engaged extensively with the township professional consultants, and as a result of these close collaborations, we received unanimous recommendation for the preliminary and final approval from the planning commission when we appeared before them last month. So, as Mark said, this has been a long and deliberative and collaborative process for an important and necessary addition to our campus. I'm very appreciative of our work with the township and with the community, and we look forward to continuing that, and thank you. And I'm gonna turn this over to the design team now. Thank you.
Thank you, chancellor.
Good evening. Eric Claye's from Gilmore Associates. We are the site engineers on the project. Okay. The square footage of the proposed academic building is about 27,000 square foot. We're adding about 35 parking spaces. You can see the—where we're taking access off Cloverly Lane, which is to the northwest on the site plane. Beyond that, we are proposing stormwater management controls to control all the new impervious on-site. We do have review letters from the township engineer and also the township traffic engineer. The letters are—will comply with the exception of any waiver we're gonna be asking for. That's really the gist. I like to do fast presentations, so if there's any questions for me, we can answer them. If not, it's just waiver items. Okay. I'm gonna go through the footprint of the building as compared to the overall square footage.
Okay.
Give me one second here. Okay, as I stated, the square footage of the footprint is about 27,000 square foot. The first floor is 20,700 square foot gross. Second floor is 27,000 square foot, and the third floor is 26,400, for a total of 74,100 square foot building, three stories. That's all we have unless you have questions.
Are there questions from members of the board?
If not, we can go through the waivers.
Okay. Why don't we do that?
Sure. Okay. We have waiver—11 waivers requested. The first waiver is from 146-9-A. It's from the application process. We respectfully ask for the project to be considered as a preliminary slash final. Waiver number two, Section 146-10A1. The ordinance requires 1 inch equals 50 plan scale. We are actually blowing it up a little bit more due to the small size of the site. We are utilizing 1 inch equals 40, which is actually improving the scale. Waiver number three, Section 146-11A4. It's to provide the name, area, et cetera, et cetera, of all the track—neighbors within 400 feet of the site. We've provided enough that the township engineer feels satisfied that we provided the overall surrounding areas. Same thing with number four, 146-11B3. It's another existing feature item. Again, the township engineer feels we've addressed enough information from the surrounding neighbors. Number five, same item, existing features. We've provided it because of the low scale of this area. Our site area is eight and a half acres. The property's 48. To provide all that information around our entire campus would be burdensome, so we only provided what was around our little particular eight and a half acres. Number six, 146-24D3 was for cartway improvements in Cloverly Lane. Your township engineer agrees that the road is in good condition and did not need improvement, so we're asking for a waiver from those improvements. 146-27 is sidewalks and curbs. This is a partial waiver. There are sidewalks along Cloverly and Woodland, so we—in negotiations with your traffic engineer, they decided that we—they would like—let me get to the plan. Better access through the property. What you're seeing in blue on the screen is our existing sidewalks through the campus, but there was a break. There was a section where the students would have to walk across lawn or parking lots. The red area shows the area where we're gonna connect with sidewalks, so students no longer have to either walk into the parking lot or on lawn. So we're gonna have a nice path now through the campus. All right. Number nine waiver, 146-33D. It's a waiver to have stormwater pipes less than 18 inches. There's 15-inch pipes all through the campus. We're tying into those pipes with 15 inches. It just makes sense, and the township engineer agrees. Number 10 now for waivers. A road—it's 146-43C3A. Again, it's a lot of information about the existing surrounding area we're asking a waiver from due to the limited area we're working. Number 11 is for disturbing steep slopes. In the location of southeast—and I'm gonna walk up—my voice can, so you'll still be able to hear me. This general location right here, there's steep slopes, which what that means, it's more than 33% slope. We have to disturb it. The township engineer agrees. It's a de minimis request for what we're doing. They are the waivers we're requesting.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from members of the board regarding the waivers? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, that concludes our presentation.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Jonas. So, this is not a voting meeting. This is the working session, and what this means is that this item would appear on the agenda at the regular voting meeting at next month—next month's meeting. Any comments or questions? We appreciate the partnership. This has been a long process. We understand. We value Penn State Abington as an anchor in this community, and we particularly value the chancellor's approach to building community and working more closely together with the township. We're excited about the internship program that has gotten underway, and I think there are many other important things that we can do together. So, we look forward to seeing you at next month's meeting.
Thank you very much. We'll be back.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone—maybe before—you—is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak to this application? Okay. And is there anybody on Zoom? Okay. 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 We are gonna take two minutes before we begin the hearings, and so we'll be right back. Okay. Before we proceed with the hearings on the agenda, I'm gonna turn this over to manager man Freddie quickly.
Are we convened?
We didn't.
Oh.
I just said—we haven't convened the hearings. We haven't convened the hearings yet, no.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Earlier this evening, a citizen expressed and had the right to a comment. It was a comment that was made regarding Chief Malloy and the position he's taken as it relates to crime in Philadelphia. I'm the township manager. Chief Malloy is—reports directly to me. I am proud to say that I am the person who promoted Chief Malloy, and I stand by his dedication to law enforcement in Abington and the community. And all I want to say is that I do not believe in any way, shape, or form that his comments were racist in any way. When he was speaking about what's happening in Philadelphia, his comments were related to an assessment of the situation to a very heinous, in his mind, crime against a child within the borders of Abington Township. It was an assessment of the situation. It wasn't intended to be a political statement. It was just his assessment, and I think perhaps it would be best to let him have 30 seconds—
Sure.
—to address it himself.
Yep. Chief Malloy?
Thank you, President Hecker and manager man Freddie, and I will be brief. I just—I just wanted—and I know I'm just speaking to this one individual, because I don't think her opinion represents the majority or many people at all in our township. I took an oath 30 years ago to be sworn in as a police officer in Abington Township, and there's nothing more proud and more noble that I could do with my life than do that. And in all my 30 years, fair and impartial policing, the relationship that we have built based on trust and transparency and mutual respect with the Black community, and to be called a racist and sitting here on vacation with my wife listening to this was really offensive, and to be called a racist casually by that individual and by the editorial board of the Inquirer when I was simply speaking up on a matter of public concern where an individual who was—had a 30-page rap sheet, numerous gun violations, a felon not to possess a gun, and was in court a week before the incident at the mall—I was speaking directly to that. And whether I'm calling somebody who's duly elected incompetent in his office just because he's duly elected, I think I have the right to do that because I took an oath to protect our community. And when those policies infringe on the safety of my community, I take that seriously. So, I just wanted to say that, President Hecker. I was offended by those remarks. I think when they offend the chief—or they call the chief a racist, by extension, they're calling my police department racist. We do everything we can to enforce the law without regard to race, and this was a simple statement based on those facts at that time. And I know other chiefs and more chiefs and members of the Black community and the people that I work with and on the Council for Fair and Impartial Policing also are aware of this, and I just wanted to say that on behalf of my officers, the great work that they do, and I'm happy that this incident at the mall was resolved that way. Public safety should not be partisan, and I don't—I regret that anybody took it that way. That's not my role. My role is to try to protect my citizens and do the best that I can, and I do appreciate the overwhelming support by the Board of Commissioners, manager man Freddie, and my community. And that's all I have to say, President Hecker, and I appreciate you giving me the time to do this and manager man Freddie.
Thank you very much, Chief Malloy. Manager man Freddie, you wanted to say one more thing?
I just do want to say one other thing. I think it's important that everyone recognize that the individual who came to the podium that day—or this evening and made that statement had every right to do so, is entitled to say that, is entitled to her opinion, and I do not want anyone to think that I'm characterizing what she said as calling Chief Malloy a racist. I think what was important for me to say is that the position he took as it relates to his comments regarding the Philadelphia DA was more an assessment in his role as chief of police, not necessarily an indictment of the speaker's right to say what she said.
Understood. Thank you. Okay. Senator Clark. So we're now gonna move forward?
Yes, sir.
And we followed—with to have a motion to convene the hearing?
Yes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of convening the hearing, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Hecker. This is a public hearing for liquor license transfer application to transfer a restaurant liquor license, number R-3746, from the municipality of Plumb Township, Montgomery County, Montgomery County, into Abington Township. The applicant is Highland Restaurant and Bar LLC, the property which is the subject of this hearing. In the application—for an intermunicipal transfer of liquor license to applicant's business is 391 Highland Avenue, Abington Township. The hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments and recommendations of interested individuals residing within the municipality concerning the applicant's intent to transfer a liquor license into the municipality of Abington Township. This application, which was submitted by Paul Heron of Kelly and Heron's CC, was received by the township on June 27th, 2023. The Pennsylvania Liquor Code requires the township render a decision within 45 days of the submission of a complete application, or in the alternative, within an additional 60 days at the township's election with written notice to the applicant. My office notified the applicant's attorney of the township's intent to hold a hearing on the application this evening, which is within the statutory requirements. We have reviewed and found the application to be substantially complete. The Pennsylvania Liquor Code sets forth seven mandatory provisions with respect to processing applications for intermunicipal transfers of liquor license. Section 4-461B3 of the Liquor Code provides that an intermunicipal transfer of a license must first be approved by the governing body—maybe I learned—of the receiving municipality when the total number of existing liquor license in the receiving municipality equals or exceeds one license per 3,000 inhabitants. We have contacted the quoted department of the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. They have confirmed that Abington Township has in excess of one license per 3,000 residents. Section 4-461B3 further states that upon request for an intermunicipal transfer, at least one public hearing shall be held by the municipal governing body for the purpose of receiving comments and recommendations of interested individuals residing within the municipality concerning the applicant's intent to transfer a license into the municipality. Accordingly, the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board may not approve a new license unless the township first holds a public hearing and approves the intermunicipal transfer application. The township is required to render its decision by resolution or ordinance, and we have provided for the board this evening a copy of a resolution approving the transfer and a copy of a resolution denying the transfer. The applicant—the application has been advertised consistent with the Liquor Code on July 27th, 2023, and August 3rd, 2023. The applicant is represented here this evening by Mr. Paul Heron Esquire. Mr. Heron, you will now have the opportunity to present the application, any information, any evidence you would like, and any testimony you would like, and then make yourself available. And if you have any witnesses with you this evening available for questions from any members of the board. Do you understand this process, Mr. Heron?
I do, Mr. Solicitor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Heron, if you have previously marked any exhibits you plan on submitting, you can hand those up to the board at this time.
I will hand up an affidavit of service indicating that notices were served on a list of residents that was provided by your office, and if I might hand up this affidavit of service.
Hand that to me, and I will give that to the court reporter, and we will mark this as applicant one. This is the affidavit of service.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, as the solicitors indicated, I'm representing the Highland Restaurant and Bar LLC, a Pennsylvania limited liability company that's asking for you to consider issuing a resolution granting the transfer of this restaurant liquor license to my client. By way of background, the corporate principal of my client is Daniel Katz. Daniel Katz, who's here tonight with his wife Chelsea and some family members, has been involved in the family-owned West Avenue Grill located at 718 West Avenue, Jenkentown for the last 22 years. As being involved with that business, Dan has really had experience in all phases of the business. In fact, about 10 years ago, they had a liquor license that they utilized in the premises, so he's also familiar with all aspects of liquor service and the rules and regulations that are provided in the Pennsylvania Liquor Code. Daniel also owns the Pizza Wheel, which is located across the street from West Avenue Grill, and operates a food truck from which he does special events and catering. With respect to the restaurant, the plan is to have a menu, which is a modern American fusion, with shared plates, average checks per person, $35 to $40, so it's a little bit of a higher-end restaurant than some of the other local restaurants. As the solicitor stated, the restaurant is located at—will be located at 391 Highland Avenue in Abington. It was the former home of the old Bernies, which is no longer obviously operating. They've entered into a lease with the landlord, the owner of the shopping center. The space is about 4000—oh, 4,000, excuse me, square feet. Obviously, there's adequate parking in being part of a shopping center. Renovations have commenced, mostly cosmetic sorts of things, not major structural repairs, nothing of that sort. It is expected that those renovations will be completed shortly. Hopefully, by the end of this month, they'd like to be able to open in September, October. The approximate cost of the renovations that have been done run between $200 and $250,000, so obviously, it's a substantial investment on Mr. Katz's part. The total seating capacity of the restaurant is approximately 150—15 seats for bar seating. There is a 750-foot fenced-in—square foot fenced-in outside patio with approximately 30 to 35 seats. Their hours of operation will be from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. during the week. Longer hours on Friday and Saturday. They will have brunch on Saturday and Sunday as well. They'll employ at least 10 to 15 people, and as you're probably aware, the other restaurants employ a fairly large number of people, so they're an employer who I think the township can be happy to welcome into a new venture. All of the sellers and servers will receive ramp training. The owner-manager, who will be Dan Katz, will receive owner-manager training pursuant to the ramp program with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. They will have very limited sales of takeout beer, no more than two six-packs or 192 fluid ounces in any one transaction. And basically, to sort of summarize, Dan is making a substantial investment, wants to continue with this vocation that has been part of his family for quite some time. Dan is here and would be happy to answer any additional questions that any—any members of the commission would have, but I would ask that you give him the opportunity to go forward with this and approve the resolution as requested. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you wish to come forward? Certainly welcome to do so.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for taking our time.
Since you're going to fall into the category of a witness, you're gonna need to be sworn.
Okay.
Just a gentleman behind you is where you—
Just on this word, firm, suspect of witness receiving is the truth, the whole truth, and otherwise, truth.
Yes. Daniel Katz. K-A-T-Z.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for taking the opportunity to have us here tonight. My wife Chelsea and my family are here tonight. As many of you know, I come from a family from the Katz's. We started West Avenue Grill 22 years ago. We recently opened Pizza Wheel this last year. We are—been in Jenkentown for many years. We're very excited here to come to the Abington Township. We're very— We're very excited. The township seems very excited. The people seem very excited. We're really excited to bring our knowledge and experience to a wonderful location that has, you know, so much potential and unfortunately did not before, but here we are, and you can't go backwards. We are going to bring, you know, a great time, great food, and employ about seventy-five to one hundred people. And hiring has already been underway. We've already hired about thirty-five, forty people, and we're just really excited to bring the concept to Abington and the community. And I thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you.
Appropriate if any members of the board have any questions for this witness or for his attorney. If not, then we would ask if anyone would like to make public comment on this application.
Are there members of the board that wish to make comment or question? Commissioner Beck, Vice President of Ahe, sorry.
Commissioner too. I don't have any questions, just comments. First, want to thank the Katz family for hanging in there. It's been a long night, not as long as the last month, but still long. Yeah, this is in my ward. It's actually right down the street. You know, my family and I have many, many great memories at West Avenue Grill. Looking forward to making them again at Highland Avenue Grill. Anything can be an improvement to what was previously there. So knowing the product that you'll bring, very, very excited about this opportunity. For my colleagues, this is one license out, one license in. Totally good by my book, so I would ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President of Ahe. Any comments or -- Commissioner Henry.
Can you just clarify how many employees again? I think there was a discrepancy between what you just stated.
Yeah, I may have misstated. I think.
We're going to hire about seventy-five to one hundred people for that location.
That's terrific. Thank you.
No problem.
Commissioner Spiegelman.
I just -- also a big West Avenue Grill fan, but this is actually just a comment, I think, just to help folks here and especially folks watching at home. This is to clarify -- to expand on what Solicitor Clark's explanation. Folks who are longtime viewers of our proceedings will know, this is something of a technical exercise that we have to do because in Abington Township and in a great many, especially of the larger municipalities and cities in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we're all past that point of current number of liquor licenses per capita. So this isn't anything particularly exotic that we're doing. It's fairly de rigueur. So -- and again, can't wait to eat at your new establishment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman. Mr. Weingrad.
Just a quick question. You had mentioned a number of employees you're going to have. Will those employees be trained, you know, in terms of being able to understand when someone's intoxicated, not to serve people that are visibly intoxicated? You know, obviously, we want to make sure that the motorists on our roads are not drunk. Right?
Absolutely. Can I address that? I stated that all of the sellers and servers will undergo ramp training, which is provided through the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, and they will receive certifications in connection with that training. And in fact, new employees will also receive the training. So, you know, we obviously are cognizant of that issue, and I think we've covered that.
Great. Thank you. I wish you good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. Any further comments or questions? My only question is whether I can get the recipe for your trifecta pizza. It's a big -- it's a big hit in my household. I guess we'll open it up for public comment, then? Is anyone here in the room that wishes to make public comment on this application for the liquor license transfer? Seeing none? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Laura Lehman, you're unmuted.
Laura Lehman, fourteen thirty-one, Brian Blaine. So thank you, Mr. Katz, for bringing this. I think we're going to really appreciate the change. It sounds wonderful. So one of the questions that I had is the -- I saw that you had notified the neighbors. I assume that's within five hundred feet. You notified all of them within five hundred feet?
I'm not -- I was provided with a list, so of about sixty to sixty-five neighbors.
And was that everyone within five hundred feet, Mr. Clark?
They were -- they were provided with a list consistent with the zoning code of those who lived within the required distance for mailing.
And I think I've asked for the third time now. Is that required distance, five hundred feet?
Yeah. No standing, right?
I don't know off the top of my head.
I can say, as the war commissioner reviewed a list, and I'm pretty sure it includes everybody within five hundred feet.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. It was breaking up. Tell me again. You provided a list.
I am fairly certain that they notified everybody within five hundred feet.
Thank you. That's the distance, five hundred feet. Okay. So my concern is with the other liquor license people, much closer than that, did not know, and you heard from one tonight.
Well, you can comment on that at the subsequent hearing, and I will tell you that we also have an affidavit of services to demonstrate that there was notification to over a hundred and forty houses involving the second hearing. So -- but if you have any other comment related to this hearing, please proceed.
Okay. So -- and one of the problems in speaking rights, Mr. Hecker, is you are not allowed
Ms. Lehman, do you have a comment about the liquor license transfer or not?
And this relates to what you just said as well. You are not allowed to direct our comments.
When it is a hearing about a liquor license transfer, your comments must be germane to the transfer of the liquor license and nothing else. If you have comments related to that, please make them now.
You -- I appreciate knowing that, and my question -- my comment about the other one was not appropriate, but you need to listen to my comment fully to know if it's appropriate or not, and then I can understand if I've made a mistake.
Do you have further comment about this liquor license transfer application?
Okay. So I did, and it went right out of my head with this exchange. So give me just one second, and let me think what the other thing was that I wanted to ask was -- oh, no. That was for the other one. Well, it went right out of my head. So that's why you're not allowed to interrupt speakers, okay? So if I think of it at the next one, when it's my chance to speak again, I will bring it up.
Well, no, because this hearing will be concluded. So this is the opportunity to speak about this liquor license transfer. And if you don't have any further comments about this, then we will move on. Thank you. Does anyone else? Okay. There's no further public comment, and now we entertain -- oh, there -- please come forward. I didn't see you back there. If you guys could step back and allow her to have the podium.
I just wanted to voice full-throated support for the --
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Jan Hoffman, and I've gotten to know Dan and Chelsea as I was hoping to negotiate their lease for the property. They came with a great reputation. They came with amazing energy. But with watching how they have conducted themselves, how they have pulled this together from just a thought to a reality, to standing here in front of you today, I couldn't be more thrilled to recommend that this is passed. And I'll end by saying, I think after tonight, we could all use a place to go get a drink.
Is there any further public comment? I'm not sure you can top that one. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
What is the motion?
Motion to approve the transfer of liquor license application.
Okay. Is there a second?
Is that a motion to close the hearing first?
No.
Oh, my bad. Second.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations. May I now have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is closed. We will -- Solicitor will now move forward.
We would need a motion to open the --
Can we have -- do I have a motion to open this hearing?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is opened.
Thank you, Mr. Hecker. This is a public hearing for liquor license transfer application to transfer a catering club liquor license number CC dash four two zero from the municipality of West Pots Grove Township, Montgomery County into Abington Township. The applicant is Ukrainian Educational and Cultural Center, Inc. The property, which is the subject of this hearing for an intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license, is located at seven hundred North Cedar Road, Jenkentown, Abington Township. The hearing is being held for the purposes of receiving comments and recommendations of interested individuals residing within the municipality concerning the applicant's intent to transfer a liquor license into the municipality of Abington Township. The applicant -- application, excuse me, which was submitted by Darren Currits of the law offices of Richard A. Lefchak, was received by the township on July eleventh, twenty twenty-three. The Pennsylvania Liquor Code requires that the township render a decision within forty-five days of the submission of a complete application, or in the alternative, within an additional sixty days at the township's election with written notice to the applicant. My office notified the applicant's attorney of the township's intent to hold a hearing on the application this evening, which is within the statutory time requirements. We have reviewed and found the application to be substantially complete. The Pennsylvania Liquor Code set forth certain mandatory provisions with respect to processing applications for intermunicipal transfers of liquor license. Section four dash four six one B three of the Liquor Code provides that an intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license must first be approved by the governing body of the receiving municipality when the total number of existing liquor license in the receiving municipality equals or exceeds one license per three thousand inhabitants. We have contacted the quoted department of the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. They have confirmed that Abington Township has in excess of one license per three thousand residents. Section four dash four six one B three further states that upon request for an intermunicipal transfer, at least one public hearing shall be held by the municipal governing body for the purpose of receiving comments and recommendations of interested individuals residing within the municipality concerning the applicant's intent to transfer a license into the municipality. Accordingly, the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board may not yet approve a new license until the township first holds a public hearing and approves the intermunicipal transfer application. The township is required to render its decision by resolution or ordinance, and we have provided the board -- for the board this evening a copy of a resolution approving the transfer and a copy of a resolution denying the transfer. The application has been advertised consistent with the Liquor Code on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and August third, twenty twenty-three. The applicant is represented here this evening by Darren Currits Esquire. Mr. Currits, you'll now have the opportunity to present the application, any information, any information you would like, and any testimony you would like, and then make yourself available. And if you have any witnesses here with you this evening available for questions from members of the board. Do you understand this process, Mr. Currits?
Yes, I do.
And do you have any exhibits that you have previously marked that you would like to hand up to the board at this time?
Yes, I have an affidavit of service, and then I have a sketch of a premises that is marked as Exhibit A.
I will take the application affidavit of service, which we will mark as applicant one. And are these for all the board members, or is there one for everyone? Or -- okay.
And it's also on the screen, so. Good evening.
You may proceed.
Good evening. My name is Darren Currits, and I represent the Ukrainian Educational and Cultural Center, which I'll also be referring to tonight as the UECC. The UECC is requesting approval for the intermunicipal transfer of catering club liquor license number CC four twenty from West Pots Grove Township to its existing location at seven hundred North Cedar Road in Abington Township. The UECC is a nonprofit community center and social club with private membership that has been operating in Abington Township since nineteen eighty. The UECC would plan to use the catering club liquor license in its existing space to sell alcohol to its members and also at catered events that would be hosted at its facility in order to help raise funds for the organization for its other charitable and educational programs. Under the Pennsylvania Liquor Code, a catering club licensee is generally limited to selling alcohol to its own members on its premises. So if approved, the UECC would not be open to the public for the sale of alcohol. Someone couldn't just walk into the premises and purchase a drink in the same way they could at a restaurant, like we just heard at the last hearing, for a restaurant license. Now, the Liquor Code does allow a catering club to also have catered events on the premises, and these are events that are pre-arranged with the PLCB, and they could be an event that the UECC would host for itself, such as a fundraiser or a rental of the facility to a third party that would want to rent the facility for a private event, and the UECC could supply the alcohol for that event. But in the regular course of business, the premises would not be open to the public. It would only be for the sale of alcohol to their own members. Now, with me tonight from the UECC, I do have Dr. Mark Schust, and at this time, I'd like to call Dr. Schust as a witness and ask him some questions.
Raise your hand. If someone is sworn in, that's my question. Recede into the truth, the whole truth, not the lie of the truth. If it stays, start.
Mark Schust, S.H.U.S.T.
Dr. Schust, can you just state your name and position with the UECC?
Yes, hi. My name is Mark Schust. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the UECC, and I've been serving that capacity for probably close to ten years. One of eighteen Board of Directors, all of whom we work in a volunteer capacity for the good of the community and the community center.
And can you just generally describe what type of organization the UECC is?
Yes. The Ukrainian Educational Cultural Center is essentially a community center focusing on educational, cultural, and social activities focused largely on the Ukrainian-American community, as well as the local immediate community where the center is located and where we feel we serve that community as well.
Excuse me. If you could just try and say --
Yeah, if you want to.
Oh, sure.
Better? I guess we'll share this one. Perfect. Thank you. Can you just describe a few of the specific programs that the UECC offers?
Right. So the UECC consists predominantly of a core number of ongoing programs, including a twelve-year Ukrainian Heritage School, which meets every Sunday morning during the school year. There's a nursery school. There's a Ukrainian library. There's a senior citizens organization. There's a Ukrainian radio program. And now one of our newer programs is called the Ukrainian Information Bureau, which serves as a resource, basically, for the Ukrainian-American community. And there's a whole host of other organizations that participate in activities on a varying basis in addition.
Dr. Schust, I'd now like to just direct your attention to what's marked as Exhibit A and is on the screen here. Can you identify what is depicted in Exhibit A?
Yeah, I can. I actually walked over here as well.
Yeah, sure.
And so this is a floor plan of the -- of our community center. We're going to need to give you a -- That's okay. I'll hold it right here. I think we can do that. It's fine.
Yeah.
So if you look at the floor plan, on the right hand, you kind of see an L-shaped, you know, drawing, which depicts a two-story structure where essentially our classrooms on the top floor of our Ukrainian Heritage School and on the bottom floor is the nursery. On the left side, you see a black area that's outlined, and that's the area that we're asking to be included in the license and the permit. It includes on the right, you see three rooms called galleries, gallery one, two, and three. Think of them as meeting rooms, basically, that can be partitioned off or used together as one room. There's a large room called an auditorium with a stage, much like a large meeting room or a catering hall. There's a kitchen area. There's some lobbies where you come in from the parking lot. And in the top, you can see a room called the club room. That's the room where they're proposing to be licensed for use for this members-only club liquor license, where we would serve members.
Dr. Schust, can you just tell us what days and hours that club room would be open to members for the purchase of alcohol?
So we're going to kind of work on this slowly initially. I think the plan initially is to start functioning only on Friday, Saturday evenings and Monday evenings, probably from maybe three in the afternoon until ten o'clock in the evening. The reason is those are the evenings that we currently see the most activity there. Monday evening specifically is an evening. You might ask, why Monday evening? Because that's an evening of a lot of groups that tend to meet and have activities there. So we'd like to start off at times that probably our members would be most available to partake. Perhaps over time, we might expand those hours depending on, you know, how things work out.
And would the club room be open to the public at all for the purchase of alcohol? And would the club room be open to the public at all for the purchase of alcohol?
This would be a members-only club room. I mean, it would be by membership only, it would not be open to the public.
And would you guys be planning on offering food as well in addition to alcohol to your members?
There probably would be some food. Again, this is not designed to be specifically a drinking establishment, it's designed to be a gathering spot, a social place. There probably will be some hot and cold foods available as well.
Great. Can you just describe, you know, what, what other activities would take place in these other rooms, the auditorium and the three gallery rooms, if they were licensed, as far as the sale of alcohol, what they would be used for?
Right, so, so those rooms could be used for rentals, you know, to essentially private rentals. These events are happening right now. You know, rentals to private organizations for various types of events, such as birthday parties, anniversary parties, graduation parties, things like that. They could be used for events such as fundraiser events by the Ukrainian Center or other related organizations that operate within the community center as well.
And how many of those events do you guys typically have, like the fundraisers for the UECC itself?
So the, the Ukrainian Educational Cultural Center fundraisers themselves don't happen very frequently. We tend to have a couple of events yearly. The rentals, we do more often. Rentals, we probably have about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy per year, which right now tend to happen in, in those rooms. My anticipation is that number probably would not change.
And how is alcohol supplied for those rentals currently without the liquor license?
So currently, I mean, alcohol is not supplied, so under the current arrangement, if we have renters or whatever, they essentially supply their own, bring their own.
And why would the UECC want to supply the alcohol for these events rather than having the renters bring on their own alcohol through a caterer, whatever it might, might be?
So there's been some limitations in the past on our ability to provide, I, I think a lot of our renters and other people that use these facilities with flexibility. I, I think some of them have asked for the opportunity for a higher level of service, which we're unable to provide right now. I think from our perspective, there's a couple of benefits in having that capability. First of all, quite frankly, it, it becomes an opportunity for us to generate some revenues, which is something that's very important to us in operating the facility. I mean, we're always looking for capital improvements, we're looking for ways to operate at a higher level, make improvements, not only for the center, the sake of the community center, but for the neighborhood itself, you know, ways to improve the appearance of the center, how it fits into the community. But quite frankly, another concern is safety and security. You know, I, I think that if we had a, the control over providing the liquor, it would give us a level of control, I think, over, you know, how these events are conducted, which probably would provide for a higher level of security than I think is available right now, where people are bringing their own and kind of, you know, partaking in an uncontrolled fashion.
And I'm, I'm glad you brought up the surrounding community. My next question is, how, how would the UECC plan to mitigate any potential impacts on the surrounding community?
So as far as the actual club room usage itself, where there would be the members-only section, I mean, the mitigation is, I, I don't think that the usage of that room itself would have any impact on the local neighborhood whatsoever. I mean, this, the usage of that room would be limited to members only. It would be very controlled, the hours would be controlled, the service there would be controlled, limited to members only. So it's my expectation that probably it would be a very limited volume type of operation. I think from the perspective of residents in the immediate neighborhood, they probably would not even be aware of the fact that anything has changed. There would probably be very, very little, little impact on the community. But certainly, you know, going forward, as we, you know, you know, move on this venture, it will certainly be our intent to conduct ourselves in a fashion there which has only a positive impact on the neighborhood and the community.
And Dr. Schust, just one more question on this sketch here. This outlined area that's proposed to be licensed, we're, we're a little zoomed in here. Where, where is that actually located relative to, say, you know, the rest of, of your property and the neighboring properties, if we, if we can talk about that a little bit?
So on the bottom end of the drawing, which is the front of the building, that's located along Cedar Road, which is the busy road which provides access to our parking lots in our facility. So on the bottom left-hand corner, there's an open area, that's a parking lot, and that parking lot actually winds around on the left side of the building and then fills in the area on the top left of the building where the parking lot, where really much of the parking lot is in the back. So extending beyond where this drawing is, going upward, is a large field. You know, I don't know the exact measurements. If you think in terms of soccer fields, it's probably something a little larger than the size of probably the width of one and a half soccer fields. And the, and in the back, you have, I believe it's Rosely Avenue. So there's a pretty significant separation between our building and any immediate roadways or, or residential structures.
All right, those, those are all the questions I have. We'd be happy to answer any of the questions from the board members or the public.
Yeah, sure. We'll start with members of the board. Commissioner Rothman.
Thank you for the presentation. I have a series of questions that I've received from, from residents that I'd like to go through, so please bear with me as we do that. I don't know within the building where certain things are located, but I believe that there's a dance studio, as well as some other locations or, or entities that occupy the building that have children present. Can you let us know where in the building those are located and, and what the plan would be to keep either children from laundering in there or members of, of the club from, from doing the same alternatively?
Sure. So the, let me just start by saying that during the majority of hours, well, for many of the hours, there probably will not be any overlap of times where there's actually school in session, so to speak, during club hours. I, I say that specifically because probably one of our busier times of operation in the community center is on Saturday mornings when we host Ukrainian Heritage School, which is a busy time. It's, it's a lot of activity, a lot of, a lot of kids in session, during which time the club wanted to be open. Now, on Monday evenings, as I alluded to, there are some activities, and particularly the dance classes, which are happening on the bottom level. So if you look at the drawing, it's on the, on the right side, not within the licensed areas, it's on the downstairs, so physically separated from the club itself. Now, to answer your question, you know, how, how is it that there would not be any intermingling of, of, you know, dance students and, and club members? The, the students are closely supervised by teachers, by, by dance coaches, they're busy doing their dancing, there's no reason why any of them should be anywhere near the club area. You know, furthermore, you know, the nature of, of the way that evening works and the nature of the way much of the operation is at, at the community center is that generally students are often accompanied by their parents. Parents come in, they're what they're, you know, they're reading a book upstairs in one of the lobbies, they're hanging out, they're talking, they're socializing with each other. So their parents are often on site, so it's not like the, the kids are removed from their parents' supervision. You know, it's our hope that perhaps the club room gives these parents an opportunity to socialize in, in a, in a slightly more diverse environment on site, instead of perhaps looking for reasons to leave the building and, and go to another bar off-site or something like that, but instead keep, keep the families together. But there's supervision on a number of levels, and there's a separation, and under any circumstances, there's no reason why any kid should ever be in the club room.
I'll just add to that, that under the Pennsylvania Liquor Code, minors are allowed to frequent a licensed premises if they're supervised, just like they would at a restaurant that sells alcohol with their parents. And as Dr. Schust said, it sounds like all the minors would be supervised either with a parent or a guard, or a teacher or other guardian.
Sure, yeah. I mean, I think that the people that asked me the questions were more concerned about those children that were not going with their parents to embrace, you know, the, the atmosphere. I've been to clubs or, or golf clubs or the like where you have the ability to go into a fridge and get your own beer, and you put a checkmark down next to your name or whatever, and it comes on your bill. In this situation here, who's going to be the one serving, enforcing that we're not having people drunk out in the streets? You know, in the, in the prior hearing, we discussed training that the, the employees would undergo. What do we have in this scenario to, to assure the public that, that there's eyes on the activities in there?
Right, so there, there will be no self-service of any kind. The, let me just kind of preface by saying that the, the Ukrainian Center has a very longstanding history of operating in a very wholesome and reputable fashion. I mean, there's a longstanding history, we've been there since nineteen eighty, a history of, of leadership which has built a reputation of responsibility, making good decisions. What we're proposing here is not creating some kind of a party central. I think there's other opportunities for that type of socializing, people looking for in, in other places. We're not looking to generate that, we're not looking to attract that, we're looking to create, again, a, a place of, of wholesome socializing for our members. So to get back to your question, the bar, the, you know, the club room will be managed by staff, bar managers, bartenders, that will be carefully vetted by the, the community center. They're going to be trained, they're going to be, you know, again, these are individuals that will be required to act in a, in a very responsible fashion, will be trained by whatever resources we have available to make sure that they understand their responsibilities. They're going to be monitored closely by our leadership, and the objective in the end, again, is to have a wholesome, family-friendly environment from the perspective of the community and the neighborhood, which would not generate any concerns from a safety or security standpoint.
With the acquisition of a liquor license, there's an associated cost, and thus presumption would be that there's a goal to, to make some money, right?
There is.
More, more beer or wine sold, more money, right? So.
To, to some limitation.
Sure. With that said, one of the things that the, the residents have asked me to, to learn more about before we vote tonight is, you know, if, if there's some sort of plan that you have to achieve a certain amount of sales, and thus, this three-day concept is more likely to turn into six or seven days in order to make back your investment here. It's not necessarily a, a question, but more so a comment. How would you respond to the concern, that concern?
So, so the, the three-day plan is really more of an operational plan. I, I don't know that there would be enough interest at this point in time, that there'd be any reason for us to be open more for three days. If we find that we're doing well and people are interested in being onsite additional evenings, would we move in that direction? Probably, but not because we're trying to meet a quota.
Okay.
But because we're trying to establish availability for our members and members of the community to, to, to be onsite and, and to fraternize with each other. So decisions to open more hours are going to be made not with the intent to sell more beer, but with the intent to provide more of an opportunity for our members to participate. Now, I, I can only hope that as a side effect, we will sell more beer to generate more revenues, but the objective is not to sell as much beer as possible, it's not to generate as much revenues. We have various sources of, of revenue streams that we work on, including, again, rental incomes, our tenants pay rents, we have various grants that we get. We're looking to, to kind of add an additional revenue stream on top of these other sources. Revenues are important to us because we're looking to make this community center solvent on a long-term plan. We got a long-term future, we want to keep it going for the good of the community center itself and for the good of the, the neighborhood. There's lots of improvements that we intend to make, we've been working on many of them. There are some financial limitations in doing everything that we want to do, but I think anybody that knows what the building looks like, I mean, you drive past it, you look at it, and it looks like an old school building. I mean, it's obvious that work needs to be done, and we're looking for ways to kind of enhance the process, speed the process, and, and do whatever we can. And that's something that I hope that the local neighborhood would benefit from also.
I want to ask a question about the notice that was provided to the, to the community. I believe we have the affidavit that, that is signed that says that notice was sent. It, it was sent a little late, for my liking, to be, to be blunt, and, and does present Do you know when it was sent? Do you have the date?
Yeah, I'll answer that one. The notice was sent on July thirty-first by first-class mail, and that was with seven days prior to the hearing, which is the requirement under the zoning ordinance in the township. The Liquor Code doesn't provide an actual notice period that's required for these hearings, it's subject to whatever the township requirement is.
When there's festivals currently, you have to apply for a permit, is that correct, in order to be able to, and, and it's, you sell a liquor at, is it wine, beer, liquor that you're able to sell, or is this different as to the actual types of, of alcohol that are able to be sold?
Right, so, so we, as a nonprofit, are eligible to apply for what are called special event licenses, which means that we can have up to six events per year, which are open to the public, outside of having a liquor license. And so we generally tend to probably have two, maybe three events per year. It tends to be holiday functions, like a Christmas bazaar or a holiday, an Easter bazaar or something like that. So under those circumstances, yes, we do, we do sell beer, wine. There may be some liquor on site, generally it's not, you know, tends, does not tend to be one of our, you know, our bigger items. And, you know, that's where, you know, historically, the way these events have been handled, and where we use it as a model for what I foresee in the future, is where individuals, often board members like myself, will act in the capacity of, of essentially delivering the, you know, the alcohol, again, in a controlled and responsible fashion. These events have always gone down very well, and I don't say that only from my perspective, but we tend to get a large amount of people, of our neighbors, from the local neighborhood who come to these events. They're thrilled with them, they very much enjoy them. I think that these events add a little bit of flavor to the community that, that is positive.
So I, I agree that there's, there's a certain amount of flavor added, for sure, but, you know, individuals have come to me over the years since, since I started, you know, working in this capacity and expressed concerns with parking out in the grass in the back and then cutting through on Roseland without anybody helping in that situation. Put, put the fact that it's going to still be some big events, and I know on Monday night, you're not going to be filling the, the back lot all, but what is your response to what measures will be taken when there's a little more? will be taken when there's a little more capacity to protect those neighbors from dealing with situat-- what I'm getting at is, they don't want this to be a problem every day. They understand that they have to deal with it once in a while, when there's a bigger event. They would be really upset with you and I if we went forward with this, when there's cars coming down there at massive amounts of vehicles, and they're being directed through the neighborhood as opposed to, and don't get me wrong, the people in Cedar aren't thrilled about it either with more vehicles, but to those people that are neighbors in the back on Roseland, what ideas do you have? I know everything's not etched out, but to help them feel a little more comfortable if this is going to come to fruition?
Got it. So, it's a legitimate concern. And, again, for those typically two events per year that we have, yes, it generates a lot of traffic. And we have also heard from our neighbors that there's some concerns about the traffic flow. We have tried very hard and continue to work on looking for ways to try to move that traffic through the facility as efficiently as possible. Some of our more recent experiments are to kind of make a one-way flow, where they come in from Cedar, park in the back, park in the grass, and then exit through Rosalie. So, yes, it does generate more traffic for those folks on those smaller streets in the back. And we are always experimenting with a way to try to improve the flow, because we've heard this, and to be perfectly honest with you, I think there's legitimate concerns, and our neighbors are important to us. We genuinely want to try to resolve things as well as possible. You know, that said, I think that these events, you know, as we said, I think they offer some positive aspects to the neighborhood, and much like maybe the case after a football game lets out from the Abington High School, or something like that, there's going to be some period of time where there is an increased amount of traffic flow in the local neighborhoods. So, we appreciate our neighbors having some patience, that, you know, sometimes, as I think you've mentioned, that they understand, sometimes this is going to happen. It's not often, and we're trying very hard, and we continue to try to look for ways to minimize the impact on the community.
Well, in that regard, this license, right? I'm certain that the neighbors are looking for this license not to increase the amount of times that they have to stomach it.
It will not change anything at all. These events have been happening for years, and alcohol has been available via the special events licenses, so nothing will change. There will not be addition, this will be totally transparent as far as these larger events that we're talking about, nothing will change at all.
Okay.
And by the way, as far as, you know, us putting an effort forth in doing so, I mean, I can personally attest to the fact that I'm one of the folks that's out in that parking lot, along with a group of other board members. We're trying to direct traffic, trying to keep flow smooth, and trying to do whatever we possibly can to make sure that, again, the impact on the neighborhood is minimal. There's going to be an impact, but we take it very personally to try and work through it.
I mean, you can understand, right, my position here as representing the neighbors who are concerned, right, both in Hollywood and on the other side?
Hundred percent.
Also, you know, wanting to support the facility that you have there, because if that were to not be able to generate any revenue and go away, I think the residents had made it pretty clear over the past few years that they don't want a Toll Brothers or someone else coming in, buying that property and putting...
And to, you know, to kind of take it one step further, I mean, the neighbors, again, we try to be responsive to our neighbors, we want to be one of the good neighbors. Neighbors have, on rare occasions, mentioned traffic issues, noise issues. We try to respond to these decisively and effectively. There were some concerns about lighting issues, this gets back to capital improvements. We've erected new lights on the parking lot to try to improve lighting, again, for our benefit and for the neighborhood. These things do cost money, so we are looking for ways to kind of keep those improvements going as much as possible, again, not only for us, but for the local community and neighborhood as well. And again, the goal here is long-term longevity for our community center, because I do not want us to turn into a casualty and have an outcome something similar to what happened, quite frankly, at St. Basil's.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Where the neighborhood is now going to be looking at 150-plus, single-family homes.
And we could talk about that part later.
I live in the neighborhood as well, so this is, I have a unique perspective of actually serving the Ukrainian Center in your ward and also living in your ward.
Sure, sure.
And kind of seeing this from both sides as well, and seeing the value, again, of respecting the neighborhood, but also wanting to keep things the way they are.
I think there needs to be a very strong emphasis on safety and the level of intoxication. I think that the community is able to stomach the fact that they live somewhere where there's going to be some festivals, right? And frankly, I agree with them that it's pretty awful on those days, right, in the neighborhood? We've had discussions, I've had discussions with the center before, there's a dumpster in the back that gets graffitied, and people want that to be covered up, they don't want that, you know, to look at that. I think that this is going to, if this were to proceed, this is going to put an additional highlight on things that the neighbors on both sides of the road there are focused on with you and the community there. And I've worked with, I've worked through many disputes with, you know, residents and the center, and I think that it's a positive place overall, but these concerns are legitimate, right? There's no trespassing signs in the back that residents don't want to look at.
Right.
Maybe take those down and be more inviting, you know, that kind of thing, I think, is something that will generate some more goodwill, right? I know there's residents that are here tonight that are super concerned, and I'm quite torn on the way to go here, because it is, I think, the community, the Ward Three community's biggest nightmare, if your facility were to go under at some point, because, you know, we're worried about the farm at Manor College, right, and the St. Basil's property, we're worried about this and being taken over and less green space. So, it is something that your future longevity is paramount in my mind in considering this, despite the fact that it might not make me the most popular person if I do decide to support it, but the longevity is important. So, I just want to highlight that that is a concern, every neighbor's concerned, and I think many of them do support you. But there's a lot of concern here. I will toss it over to anybody else that has any questions, something might come to mind.
I just want to add that I share those concerns with you, and I think we're on the same page on our objectives of safety and security and support of the local neighborhood.
Thank you, thanks for bearing with me, I know it was... I don't practice law that much anymore, so I guess when I ask questions, I go a little long.
Commissioner Spiegelman.
This is a very brief question.
Help me to judge of that.
Oh, my God. The feedback's killing me, all right. Hopefully you can hear me. This is just a quick operations question. As far as the members-only access policy, will, can members bring non-member guests, or is it just like members?
It would be members only.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Commissioner Brown.
Outside of the festivals, where I'm assuming you serve food there and there's food?
Yes.
You serve food on a regular basis there already?
Not only food, but Ukrainian food, the best kind, so yes, that's...
Okay.
It's about the food, very much so, yes.
All right, great. Do you ensure that the servers and the food preparers are served, safe, certified, and you go through a training program?
Absolutely, we have a licensed kitchen, and absolutely, 100%.
Okay, so they're already trained and everything like that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Commissioner Schreiber.
The, you said that only members can go, can use the club. Events, can outside people rent the hall, like neighbors or whatever?
Yes, because that's the catering component of the license, correct, yes.
Any other comments?
But I stress, even with the rentals, I mean, it's a very controlled environment, the objective is controlled.
I mean, I just thought that actually the neighbors would like that part of it, that they can, if they are having a birthday party or whatever.
And that happens right now, right?
Commissioner Weinberg, and then Commissioner Rothman.
Thank you, I think the question's been answered twice, but your employees are going to undergo ramp training?
Absolutely.
Anybody that's serving?
Whatever training is required for us to maximize security will be done.
All right. I mean, I believe your organization is a really valued member of this community. I don't believe that if you were to get a license that you're asking for, that all of a sudden it's going to become Animal House.
That's exactly my point, this is, the objective is not party central, I think there's other places, I don't want to point the fingers at other places, but there's other places where that might be a little more interesting for people, that's not what we're looking for here. And if that was to happen, that would be a fail, and it would be undone by whatever means necessary.
I also believe you, where you're in this for the long term, my assumption is it's probably rather expensive to get this liquor license?
It's more so than we would like, but yes.
And you're not looking to make this up in a year, but rather long-term?
Long-term.
So people can come and enjoy?
Right, I mean, but the objective with revenues from the liquor license is not to make up for the cost of the liquor license, but on a broader scale, again, to improve solvency of the center and make capital improvements, there's a bigger picture there.
And that's why, I see this as a long game, but...
Absolutely, 100%.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rothman.
As of right now, is it pretty much every weekend that you have some sort of rental in the facility that's bringing in some alcohol?
I would say there's probably one to two rentals weekly. They're not necessarily all bringing in alcohol, you know, some of them do, some of them don't. Again, that to some extent is something that we don't have any control over right now, so, you know, we don't even look to necessarily understand that, you know, but perhaps one to two per week, yes.
Sure, okay. Thanks for dealing with me.
Commissioner Henry.
I just want to say, I do see that as a real benefit, the fact that you have more oversight if you're controlling it than if people are just coming in and out with whatever they bring in, whatever they leave there, or whatever, so I think this is actually safer.
To that point, I'm just going to make the comment that as a licensee, obviously, there would be oversight from the Liquor Control Board, the Bureau of Liquor Control Enforcement, which is an arm of the state police that enforces the liquor code, and the PLCB's regulations. They obviously would have this center on the radar, once they're licensed, and they do checks often, and they could be cited or have their license suspended if they weren't operating in accordance with the liquor code.
But it would never come to that.
Understood. You may have said this already, but how many members do you have?
So, right now, we have a little over 1,000 members. The arrangement, I don't know if it matters, the arrangement, right now, our members are what we call shareholders, or voting members, where they make some contributions, and that's how they get a membership. The structure with the club membership would now be a new level of membership, where people get club memberships, basically, for some amount of, you know, money, whatever it is, and they would be then the members that are entitled to use the club, so, but currently we have over 1,000.
Got it. Commissioner Brown.
Do you guys have any discounted memberships to members of the community?
Well, that's a good question. From a marketing perspective, that is what we currently do with our voting members, is to provide benefits, additional benefits, if you will, and our objective is to somehow incorporate that into the club membership, where club members may be entitled to certain benefits. Again, I don't know how that would work with the local neighborhood, but I think there is, certainly, our objective is to add value to people who, community, whether Ukrainian-Americans or other local neighbors who are participating in our community center and its activities, we welcome everybody, and we want to give them as much value as we can. So that would be hopefully the objective.
Yeah, I think that would be a good thing to do, as if there's, you know, issues over, you know, parking and usage and everything like that, I think, you know, an olive branch would be getting more members of the community to interact with the members of the club and the frequent members, who I assume would be members of the Ukrainian-American community, right? So...
And wider than that.
Right, correct, thank you.
Okay, I think we will now open it up for public comment. Please come forward and just ask you to state your name for the record, sir.
My name is Robert O'Neill, I live at... My name is Robert O'Neill, I live at 651 Roseland Avenue.
Thank you.
The street in back that he calls "Everything But Roseland." They have gates that they keep locked until they have an event. Then they open the gates, and they have a muddy field, and our streets look like dirt. Abington street cleaners have to come and clean the streets, they're so filled with mud from these field, from the parking. They say that they do things for the community and everything else. They lock the gates, people aren't allowed to walk through the field anymore, and you say that, oh, it's beneficial for them to be there. Well, I've lived there for 45 years. Have any of you lived in Abington Township 45 years? No, have you? Okay, have you? Okay. Maybe you remember then, when they sold that school to the Ukrainian Centers, there was a builder named Shank that wanted to put houses there, and Shank was told he couldn't build houses there because they were underground streams, and that they couldn't build there, that it was an unbuildable place. Now they're saying you're worried about them closing and putting houses there? Now what has changed in that period of time? Nothing, because everybody in Fox Chase Manor gets water in their basements, it's a natural thing. There was a playground, when the school existed, where the parking lot is, and they told, the Ukrainian Center told the township, that the kids would be able to use that playground, that nothing was going to change. A month after they bought the property, they knocked the playground down to extend the parking lot. So I don't want to hear they think of the school, they think of, I'm sorry, they think of the community, because they don't. The streets are bad, you know, we've called the police numerous times when people are in the parking lot at 1:00 in the morning blasting their radios from the events they have. Now we're going to have more of it? We have tons of little children who have moved onto our street. I bought the house from my parents, my son John wanted to buy the house from us, but now he has second opinion, because he said, "It's not the same place," and it isn't. We have so many little kids there now, that we're worried that they're going to get hit by a drunk. They say that, well, we're going to let the traffic out on Roseland Avenue. That's funny, they're allowed to use our street, but we're not even allowed to walk through their field? I mean, come on, right is right. They're going to have more parties, they're going to do anything they want to do, and you're just going to allow it? I had neighbors who came here, would kind of come here, and then what they told me, they said, "What's the use, they're going to let them do what they want to do anyway? Look at the St. Basil's, they're going to let them do what they want to do." I have young neighbors who have told me that they are so sorry they moved in there. They said, "One lady told me it was a dream of hers to live there, to send their kids to Abington School District, where they would be safe, where the community is safe, and now they said, 'We are so sorry we bought here, we should have bought Wormister.'" I mean, come on. You're going to just allow them to do anything they want? Is that the way it is? You know, you say, "They forgot to mention one thing too, about the credit union at the school." I mean, they're supposed to be a nonprofit, and they're making money on the profit. So I don't want to hear that they need this to improve the school, to make it look better than it does and everything else. They have the money if they wanted to spend the money on the school. They could have been good neighbors from the very beginning. The first thing they did is they fenced it all in, and then they planted trees all around the outside of it. So I don't want to hear that you're the great neighbors and everything else, that just isn't right.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak? If so, please come forward. Yes, sir.
Albert Peterson, S E M, 633 Roseland Avenue, Chancletown, Texas, Post 19046.
I have to bear with me a little bit for two reasons. One, I'm 48 hours off an operating table, so, for major surgery on my left ear, so, if I turn my head like... operating table, so, for major surgery in my left ear, so, if I turn my head like this, bear with me, and if I motion like this, you might want to speak a little louder, because I have six months before I'm going to hear me back. Second, probably the biggest lead-in to what I have to say is, I want some notice. He's lived there for 45 years. He's a pauper. I've lived there for almost 60 years. I've seen what they've done with the school. My kids went to Cedar Road School. I can attest to those promises and many other things when the Ukrainian people bought the school, a lot more than just a few things Mr. O'Neill mentioned that never, ever came to fruition. I personally don't have an issue with the traffic. I have a tremendous issue. If you saw when they used, if you want to call it the spillover parking area for these quote-unquote "larger" events, which used to occur, actually more frequently than they do now, it's a quagmire. The amount of mud and dirt on Roseland Avenue is atrocious. It's disgusting, and you have to see it to believe it. And I have to go down and complain to my neighbor, who works in the Public Works Department, saying, "What do you do about this?" And no comment. It's just wrong. And why are we even considering this when right adjacent to this property, the mop's not up there now, boards associated with this township, and I don't know the proper name for the board, are considering a major improvement to the property right next door, who's asking for 57 variations in your zoning ordinance? And that has yet to be even marginally described, or brought to fruition, whether, what's going to be granted, what? How are we going to look at this when we can't even look at that, and see what's going to be in the long one approved, and see how this could apply to this? And I'm talking about the veterinary center on Fox Chase Road. It used to be owned by Dr. Van Sandt, I think it's called Hopewell Veterinary Center. And my property about Hopewell Center, they are still, and we are still waiting for information, from them, we meaning the neighbors, as to what they're going to do there. We had sidebar discussions with them when they were last in front of one of these boards, I don't know what sport, and we were promised a lot of things. Most of it was promised to come to me, and of five very salient pieces of information that was promised, this was over a month and a half ago, that was going to come for either their attorney, or their engineer, or their landscape architect. This is what I've received. That's zero, if you know, nothing. No communications, no approvals to allow their professionals to release that. So I don't even know what's going on right next door to me. They're asking for 30-something parking places. Do you want to see something? I wish I could show you the movie that my son used to borrow my four-wheel-drive Jeep, and they were so happy to see rain because the spillover parking, which goes between the, you don't have the picture up again, between the end of the school and Roseland Avenue. It's all grass, and it's all up in an incline. And as soon as you get rain in there, people couldn't cut their cars out. It would create, it's such a quagmire. My sons used to make money by me lending them my four-wheel-drive vehicle, because they could get down a tall mountain, charge them $2, and things like that. That's how bad it was. She hears time, and I sincerely appreciate with a little notice we gave Mr. Rothman. Really. Most of us have two days to consider this. Two days. I have a neighbor that's well within his 500 feet. He didn't even get a letter. I didn't get this letter until 4:00 on Monday. Monday, this Monday night? Previous Monday. 4:00 this Monday. This is the first time I got that letter, and the two subsequent phone calls to the law firm, I couldn't get anybody. I was disconnected once, and I didn't even hear a disconnect a second time. I'm just telling you. We want time. We want time for all the neighbors to look at this, particularly in conjunction with the other piece of property, which is right beside theirs, that's looking for 57 or 58 changes that the zoning hearing board, laws, rules, whatever they are, that have to be resolved, let alone rubber-stamping this, go in. I can personally attribute to what happened when the changes were made in 1980. The fences went up, the parties were... I don't, some of these guys that were speaking here may have not even been born when this stuff's happened. When I was born, I had to forcefully remove people from my property during one of their, I always told the expression, this is Bob, I don't know what that means, when there was so much drunkenness and so much noise, because I used to open the doors in the summer, because it wasn't air-conditioned, 10:00, 11:00 at night, and here comes the noise up...
Sir, I'm going to ask you to conclude your comments.
Okay, I'll try. We couldn't do anything about it. Did the parking lot, did the playground turn into a parking lot? Yeah, it did. Was the playground left there? No, no, it wasn't. It's just we want noise. I'm not speaking for, excuse me, we need time. I want to talk to all my neighbors, in fairness to everybody. I don't even know what the definition of a social club is, a catering club liquor license. I don't know what the criteria for denying membership to this private club is. All these things, we need time to sit down, get answers, come in. I'm not against them. They've been good neighbors in many respects, don't get me wrong. A lot of this stuff stopped in 2000. I don't know what stopped in 2000, but a lot of it stopped, but we still get the mud, we still get the promises. And if we get some time, you allow the neighbors to get some time, confer with Mr. Rothman, who was kind enough to make some, many of the positive statements tonight.
Okay.
I would appreciate it. My neighbors would appreciate it. As you can see, there's only four of us here.
Yep.
My time's up.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, sir.
I will thank you all for your attention.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Is this feedback being caused by the other microphone being up there? If it is, we're going to have to remove it. If the other, the other non-t township microphone is causing this feedback, we're going to have to remove it. Is that what's causing the feedback? We don't know. There's a non-t township microphone there, there's from a reporter who is, I guess, taking this, but if this is...
That was?
If feedback goes away, then that was it. If feedback doesn't go away, then we have another problem.
Okay, please come forward, sir. Yeah, I think it's because we have two of them on here. Can we turn off one of the two microphones? Oh, it is?
Maybe switch them? Maybe one is just got a little shorted or something.
The technical explanation?
All right, we'll give this a whirl.
I'm going to get into the technical explanation. We could be here all night.
Hi, Chuck Buglis. I'm 720 Roseland. I'm directly behind the school. We, I'm 48 years. This guy's got me a little bit there. I think it's always interesting that liquor seems to be the answer for all profit problems, winning and losing. I suggest that they raise their membership fees. Maybe that would help things. But I mean, liquor alone and what they're talking about, I can't see what, that's, how much of a difference that's going to make. I mean, they, as far as liquor's concerned. As far as the other issues, over the years, we've complained. All the trees on our street, you know, you talk about they're going to approve the community and all that kind of stuff. The trees are overgrown. There's waste all the time. The trees are horrible. They're in our gutters. They're on our lawns. I've asked them to cut them back. Talked to a gentleman here not too long ago. He said he's got a problem with drainage, because the roots of the trees are growing into the drain system, and they have to dig a hole here and dig a hole there, like they just did the other day. They don't do anything. Now, the graffiti that they're, somebody had mentioned, they did paint some of the containers, covered some of the graffiti. There's still some of it that hasn't been covered. The containers have been there, which were supposedly temporary 15, 20 years ago, are still there. And it, you know, was looking like North Philadelphia for a while there. My, I'm not going to rehash all the rest of this stuff. All I'm saying is, they say they're going to do things. They haven't done anything to improve the outside of that facility, ever. Whatever they did inside, I don't know. But outside, they've done nothing. It's all overgrown. There's weeds and stuff all along the fence. They don't clean it up. A little old guy comes and cuts a piece here and here with a 10-foot ladder. They need professional people to clean the place on a regular basis. And beyond that, whatever these guys said, it's the same. But I mean, it's always about, liquor's going to improve profits? I don't know about that. But in any event, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak? Please come forward.
Hello there.
Hi.
My couple concerns are everything that my neighbor said, and these gentlemen.
You need to state your name.
Oh, my name's Tom Grady. My concerns are the same as theirs. Also, they talked about this little club that they're going to have, and they talk about the hours and the days, and they leave it vague. And then they talk about the rentals, that they're going to have these four rooms that they're going to rent out, and I haven't heard anything about hours on that. And for these events, and, you know, I don't, you know, and they could say whatever they want here, and is it going to be the truth? If they're going to have these events, and it's going to be liquor involved, and they don't get over till 12:00 at night, these people are going to be spilling out into the parking lot, and when you have liquor, you're that much louder. And like the neighbor said, there's all these children. They're asleep. Everything echoes that much more at nighttime, because everything's quiet. So, they're my concerns. I mean, they're very vague about everything that they're saying. And, you know, like, they're decent neighbors, but, you know, I'd rather have homes there. And I personally don't think that this is any advantage to me or any of the other neighbors. And they've been there for all this time, and they've existed without this liquor license. So I can't see why they have to have it now. You know, they've survived without it, and the one man said, "Let them raise, raise their fees up a little bit, and they can make the additional money." But I don't see where it's to the neighbors' advantage for this to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you for making your comments. We'll now turn to Zoom.
Karen, you're unmuted.
Hi. I know you very well. He has been a wonderful commissioner to us, but I do want to voice my concerns. I live a block and a half. I live in the Hollywood section. This particular area has been eclipsed by a huge amount of shopping center, a shopping center that used to be sleepy, and now is putting as many shops and restaurants and drive-throughs as they can. So we have people going down our street drinking at times, because there is a bar across the street. Speaking specifically to the school, I see a trajectory of just a little more nuisance, or a lot more nuisance, actually. And I just second what a lot of my neighbors have said. When I moved here 30 years ago, it was very quiet, and it's gone from almost daily kind of activity, school buses, I can't see to get out of my street. And there's usually people parking on my street, because they're picking up their children. And we care about the kids. Okay, that's fine. But we have, it's party central now. And we have people walking through the neighborhood that are going to a party. We have people coming from a party, and as our neighbor said, it's very loud. It's not insulated very well. We've had to call the police several times over the past weeks. I'm a nurse. I get up at 4:00 a.m. I'm still working. And I have small children next to me, in the house next to me. I mean, these are human people. The selling of liquor is not going to benefit any of us. It's going to spill drunk people out into our neighborhood. And that's the other thing. A lot of these people are on foot. They're laughing, they're giggling, they're screaming. It's very loud. So this, it's changing your focus from being a community center to an entertainment center. And this is not how you model your community. You don't give alcohol to people to model your community. It's only going to cause problems. And I hope that you're increasing your liability insurance, because if somebody falls over there, or you miss that they're hypoglycemic as well as drunk, or a car goes into one of these homes from one of the drunken drivers, you're going to be liable. You know that, I'm sure. So, those are just my thoughts. I don't think it's good. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We will now entertain. Do we make a motion to close the hearing, or... Oh, wait, there's one more. There's one more. There's one more hand.
Laura Lehman, you're unmuted.
Laura Lehman, I spoke with neighbors over there who were not notified, as you've heard tonight as well. So that alone should be grounds for not making a decision tonight. And all of the things that you've heard, and various things from the residents, where, you know, getting late notice and not getting proper information, that's also, you know, not acceptable and happening all the time now. So we also have this set in a working session, which I believe you are not allowed to take votes in. So I don't know how it ended up in a working session, but it's my understanding that working sessions are not voting meetings. So how did that happen? And how can you vote if it's in a non-voting meeting? The conflicts that I heard here, I thought I heard Mr. Schu say that they were going to have events one or two times a week, but then another time, he said there would be 150 to 175, or I think they already had that number. And that would be, you know, more than three a week. So I think the conflicts in the testimony are concerning. I also think you have a very good example with St. Michael's, who has neighbors that once that entertainment center went in, they already had the same issue with festivals that these folks have. I think St. Michael's festivals were even bigger. But after they put their big entertainment center in, they had noise and things going on. So they had a weekend where they invited guests over, and there's a party going over there across the fence. People were sending me videos, and you could see the decibel reading on their decibel meeting. And at one point, they were calling, they said, "We're going to call the cops," and somebody else said, "The cops are over there, partying with them." So, you know, these are huge concerns. This is a very sweet neighborhood that has this already. You've heard the effects on this neighborhood. And so to intensify these effects so that they can have more revenue, and I know the gentleman promised that the revenue would be used to make the outside nicer, but as with St. Michael's and other places, there seems to be no effort on the township part to coordinate the owners of these establishments with the residents in the neighborhood, and require regular, you know, meetings that they, if the residents want to come, that they host regular meetings to resolve problems that come up. The problem with the dirty street shouldn't be something that the residents have to track. The problem with the dirty street shouldn't be something that the residents have to track down. They should mention it once, and some, something should be done. So there is really a concern with approving something like this under all these different circumstances. So, and the thing that I had forgotten and, and wanted to mention in the last meeting was again about the working session. That was the thing that I lost track of. So that, that also should affect, should have affected that application. And in that application, it seems that the neighbors got notified, but I think some clarity here is necessary. As the one gentleman said, a whole lot of more time would be necessary to track all these things down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we close the hearing?
Okay. Before we close the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. One more comment, okay, Commissioner Rothman.
I, I just want to point out that there's nothing in what's being proposed or, or sought by the Ukrainian Educational Cultural Center that would change the sound ordinances. So to the residents that are here or listening, if there's a problem with sound, call the police. They should and will enforce that against the UECC. If they don't, then that's another problem, and please let me know. But if this is going to go forward, and there's a chance at sound being a problem beyond standard ordinance times, that's a problem. And I hope, and the reason I'm saying that now is because I'm hoping that that's something that the, the folks from the center are, are aware of. Can't, can't be people coming out at twelve at night from the, the club. And especially since you're appealing to us for three to ten, there shouldn't be people coming out at twelve, anyway. But if they're making that kind of noise, and the police are getting involved, and I encourage us to get the police involved in that situation. Thanks.
You have the opportunity to present your case? No? You, you can make some closing remarks if, if you would like, yes.
Let's try to keep them brief, if we may.
Very seriously from the residents. They're, they've considered them, they've tried to make improvements, and they're going to continue to do that. But I think all of these concerns are pre-existing concerns, and they're not related to a transfer of a liquor license, where this facility is always operated as a BYOB facility. And now they would have a license that would allow them more control over the sale and consumption of alcohol on their premises. And that should not, if anything, that should have a positive effect on the community, because the organization would have more control, and would be subject to more oversight from the Liquor Control Board and the Liquor Control Enforcement Agency. Thank you.
Thank you. There's the opportunity for dialogue following the hearing, I'm sure Commissioner Rothman will make sure of that. Yeah, okay. I'm going to ask for a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The hearing is now closed, and I'll entertain any motions on the application before us.
Move for the transfer of the liquor license to the UECC.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. We'll now vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And that concludes our business this evening. I don't know, we can close the hearing, so I think we're good.